Called this regular meeting of city council to order December fifteenth, 2020 here at the Stafford County Annex. I have a couple of additions to the agenda. First one being ordinance number ten seventy-eight dash twenty, that is the ordinance amending the membership of the Board of Trustees of the Land Bank of the City of St. John, Kansas. And Stafford County Highway Department invoice twenty twenty dash twenty-five fifty-one in amount of fifty-six hundred. And we have a ten-minute executive session, non-elected personnel employee evaluation for the police department. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to approve please?
Absolutely.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Okay, being real citizens here this evening, have consent agenda. Regular council meeting, December one, 2020. Can I get a motion please? Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance twelve fifteen, 2020, in amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and one cent. Can I get a motion please? I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to department heads, do we have any, do you know anything from Jeff or Jason?
No, he's still waiting on the gentleman about the light plant situation.
Okay, do they have any questions, thoughts, concerns, so to pass on to Jeff? Okay, moving on, water department. Okay, what do you got, Jason?
Just on the sewer lift station down there by the grocery store, I got the pump. I need to, I got the pump out and I need to get that one serviced so we have a spare, if that would be okay? And the other one that we got back is around five thousand to get repaired, get the cord put in. And I was just wanting to know if I could get that other one sent in to have a spare. And I'm not knowing exactly what the problem is, I can't give you, he won't give me an exact amount, but I'm going off of what the last one was. Right, like that, yes, please.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion on that, John?
Yep.
I'd make a motion to allow Jason to send off the spare sewer pump for the grocery store or for the Fifth Street Lift Station.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Jason?
No, no, the street department, we're just trying to keep the holes filled in. And of course, we got the snowplows and stuff on still. And glad we haven't had to use that.
All right, any questions regarding streets or parks?
Have you been using the spin doctor or did you get a chance?
Well, I got it fixed. I've tried it out, but I have not used it fully.
I was just curious.
It works nice. Clicked out and played with it a little.
All right, unless there's anything else, move on to police department. Chief Adams.
Well, the only thing I've got, I've been asked since this last council meeting for this year, I don't know how it works. Right now, we're sitting in our budget with the last payroll. And we have a few little things out, including waiting on Marshall to get that receipt for the radios. We're still going to be setting in between, oh, you got it, okay. Between seventy and seventy-five thousand dollars at the end of the year to the good. And I know I came and approached council, I know we put fifteen thousand into our equipment fund. And I didn't know if tonight or when we do it, but I was looking to see if I could roll over twenty-five thousand out of my budget this time into it. Because next year, like I said, we're going to be full staffed, so it's going to be real interesting to see how the budget goes. I mean, I think we're still always going to be good, but we've done really well and watched what we've spent this year. And I'd kind of like to roll that over so that we have that cushion in there for the time being. Because we're still going to be, even with that, we're still looking at, you know, forty-five plus being to the good at the end of the year that we, that we go back into general funds. Or, you know, that we did spend. So I just kind of wanted to see if we could, if I could roll that over.
How much is in your equipment reserve right now?
Ten right now. Nine, nine something. Without Jamie, I was trying to get exact numbers. I don't like to come and not have the exact numbers. Without Jamie, I didn't, I didn't get everything and was able to sit down with her. But I know we're sitting between nine and ten in there right now. So we'll roll the fifteen that we automatically, I guess they've always done, and we do. But I was looking at seeing if we couldn't put an extra twenty-five in there. And then we'll go back to that rotation of the fifteens again then. Fifteen, twenty-five on top of fifteen, so that'll put us setting decently in case something was to happen, we have that emergency in there. But that's why we kind of really watched our Ps and Qs on stuff this year and tried to save everything we could.
So are you wanting to do fifteen or twenty-five or?
There's automatically already fifteen that goes.
You're wanting to do twenty-five additional?
Right, out of our budget to roll over into that, yeah. To make it forty.
Would you guys want to do that for the last meeting of the year? I've not historically gone.
Yeah, typically we do. And I think that's what Jamie had kind of said something in one of the emails about giving her the authority to go ahead and do the transfers at the end of the year instead of doing a special meeting.
Last few years, she's just done it and we haven't done a special meeting.
Right. We've just given her authority to go ahead and transfer it.
Correct.
Our normal transfers. Because we budget every year for them transfers, I mean, it's.
So you have ten thousand around that area in it now, you're going to transfer fifteen, that'd give you twenty-five thousand for next year. If you have another fifteen, the next year after that, you have forty thousand a year from, you know, a year from January, right?
Right, we have roughly, just say we have ten in there, then we automatically, I guess it's already figured in. I don't ever see it, it automatically fifteen thousand goes over into it. So that's going to be twenty-five. And I'm asking to take twenty-five out of the budget that I have now, because we're sitting at like, right now, as of yesterday, I think it was when I asked Pam, we're sitting at like eighty-one thousand dollars. And we've only got one more pay period and just a few little bills, which the highest bill is Marshall's, that's all we got for the radios. So we're still going to be setting, you know, even if that isn't going to come up to ten thousand dollars, but I was just trying to figure. So even at seventy-one thousand, if I took twenty-five out of that and put it over, we're still going to be sitting at about forty-five that we didn't, didn't use out of our budget for this year. So that will put us then at about fifty in there. And then next year, you know, we won't have the money that we have, but we were shorthanded. So we did spend as much in fuel this year, you know. Now that we'll have everybody back and we're full staffed, we're going to burn more fuel, plus if fuel goes up, you know, we may have overtime a little bit more. So I'm not figuring that we're still going to be good for next year, but I'm not figuring that we're going to have this much left over. But I just kind of wanted to capitalize and see, you know, I wasn't going to come and ask to roll it all over there. I just would like to roll twenty-five of what we have left over on top of that fifteen into there. And that way, we're sitting at fifty. And then the next year, you know, we'll just go back to the fifteen only coming in after that.
Do you, I mean, is there anything out of the ordinary purchase-wise that you're anticipating?
No.
I mean, there's nothing, right, major?
No, we don't have anything, no. That's just kind of where we're, where we're sitting, and that's why, that's why I wait till the end to figure out. But the only thing we got is payroll and a few bills, and that bill, I don't know, what is that, Marshall, fourteen hundred, I think, was for the radios?
Thirteen ninety-two, twenty, thirty-two.
Okay, that's pretty much it.
But as far as like purchases for 2021 that you're going to be pulling out of this reserve, I mean, do you have something?
No, no, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're okay, just in case something happened. There's nothing that I'm, I'm looking at down the line of mine, because we were waiting until 2022 to, to replace the Dodge. But that way, we have it in there, so if something was to happen and we're going to replace it in 2022, then in 2021, you know. If something was to happen to it, then we at least would have the money later in the year to look at or whatever, and we wouldn't be putting a bind. That's the only reason, just because we have a surplus this time. No, there's absolutely nothing that I'm looking at of purchasing big, no.
I don't have the budget memorized, but what's the equipment, what's your equipment budget for every year to begin with? You start, you have ten thousand in there right now?
Yes.
And what do you get, we're going to roll over fifteen, it's going to take you to twenty-five, what do you get in 2021 to start your fresh year?
That's it, at the end of the year, that fifteen.
Next year, whole budget fifteen thousand to roll into his equipment reserve.
Plus the fifteen he's rolling now? Is it, is it fifteen twice?
We do fifteen.
No, we do fifteen. All transfers take place at the end of the year, that way, if you do end up short in your budget.
So we've only took five grand out of the equipment reserve?
No, no, it builds up.
No, it just sits there year after year unless you spend out of it.
What I mean is, he has ten thousand in there today.
Yes.
What did he have in there January one-twenty? At least. I get, yeah.
At least.
What I mean is, if we only spent five thousand dollars, but then we want to put fifty thousand into that account for next year, we need to stop and think about that.
Well, so what they're doing, on that fifty, because I don't even see it, and I didn't even know they did it. That fifteen goes in there every year, well, that's for the replacing of the vehicles. So every year that sits, so fifteen, and the vehicles are costing more than fifteen. So the next year, then you get fifteen, now you got thirty, but that's still not enough to replace a vehicle. So then it goes into the next year, and that's what that is then. But now, we spent a lot more out of that because there was already money in there, but see, we bought the dog. We paid for the dog out of that, and then we paid for my car. And then Tori's came out of the year before. Because hers came, she got her car in December.
Vehicles always came out of equipment reserve, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have any other, yeah, that's the only place vehicles. And see, we also took the money out for the dash cams came out of there. Those different things like that is what all comes out of that equipment reserve.
I guess I would like to look at how much we run through there this year before I vote on, I guess Jamie or Pam would speak.
Really, the only major expense would be a vehicle, right? I mean, some little equipment.
Right.
So if we're not looking to getting another vehicle till 2022, we could, this time next year, we could look at doing an increase if we felt like the equipment.
You could, I was just trying to put it in there so that we have that money. Because the problem is, if we, if we come with the money of, say it cost us forty-five thousand dollars to outfit the vehicle. Because the thing is, is on the Dodge, that equipment, other than the light bar, the radar unit, the center console, won't work in the new one. You know, we're going to have to, we may have to change some stuff depending on, because the Fords are cheaper than, than the Dodge pickups. Then the equipment's going to have to be just a little bit different, you have to get the stuff. And I didn't want to have forty-five thousand dollars in there to where then we don't have anything, because if something was to happen, at least we had the money. The other thing that I'm trying to put in the equipment reserve and save a little bit of money for down the road is because when I took over, nobody's vests were, everybody's vests were expired. So we had to buy new vests, because you just couldn't send somebody in with them expired, you know, you couldn't send them to work with expired vests, that's a huge liability. Because the vests are only good for five years. And they're about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars, depending on the size of the person for a vest. So we have one part-timer who needs to get a vest, his is expired at the end of this year, so we need to get him one. But the problem is, is we're going to have other vests that are due. So I was just trying to put that money in there and just have a little bit of a cushion. That way, if something came up, something happened, but that was the only reason. Because this year, I know we're okay, you know, we did really well, but we're shorthanded. Next year, being full staffed, the vehicles all running, everything like that. You know, this will be the first time since I've been here that we'll have, we'll be able to do a full year and see where our budget is. I, I don't know where it's going to end up. I think we're still going to be okay, because we watch what we spend. But we're going to see how close we come, because it won't be like this next year on our budget. Because we, we budgeted the exact same amount for this year, or for next year as we had for this year, and it's the same amount that it was the year before. I've, I've not increased my budget. So I was just trying to get a little bit of a head so that if something was to happen, we're, we at least have a contingency where it was our money. And I don't have to come and ask for more than what we've already allotted ourselves. That's what I'm trying to keep from having to come to the council with.
I guess if we're not looking at a vehicle, I mean, I, I feel like the fifteen is probably adequate for this year, because we'll have twenty-five in that reserve for all of 2021. And then I also feel like if we're looking at doing the engine for the power plant, I know that doesn't directly affect you, but it's, I mean, the city as a whole. I mean, I would rather just do the fifteen like we planned and look at the end of 2021. If you feel like you're going to be short or certain, look and see what we have for the purchase. But that, that's just what I, I guess I would rather do at the time.
Anybody else?
Well, like, just with what Kyle said, I'd just like to know what we, what the dollars we turned through there. I just think twenty-five thousand total is, I mean, that gives us some cushion, and if we have to make adjustments, I think we can. And I agree, we, we're looking at a three-quarters of a million dollar deal. I know it's not the same department, but everything does count. I, I wish Jamie or Pam was here to talk to it about it, but.
I, I asked her, and she said it started at forty-six, and it looks like forty had been spent. But I may not have asked her the right question, because that's a little bit.
I, I don't want to vote on it without, or I'm going to vote no unless I explore it more, I guess, or I want to check into it a little bit. That's what I mean.
Chief, I think that, I think we'd need to wait until Jamie's here and we can get some more numbers on this. So council feels a little bit more comfortable in making an informed decision on this. So we can bring this up at a next meeting, if that's okay with you?
Yep. And we can actually, I do know that you can do transfers in period thirteen. So it's not like it has to be done at the end of the year.
We did that last year on a couple things.
Well, because I, I only know that because the county's about three weeks behind, and, and our transfers won't happen until sometime in late January. So we've got some time, and we can still make adjustments if needed. So I guess, yeah, I mean, see exactly what the numbers are, and then we can go from there when Jamie's back.
Yeah, we could have her look into everything, and then, let's see, our next meeting's going to be January fifth. So we can bring it up at that time. Yeah, you can get all the numbers correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else, Chief?
Nope.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Chief Adams?
Parade lights were cool. That's cool.
It was a parade.
Yeah, dealt the word, job organizing it.
We've gotten a lot of comments from people, I've been out in town, various places today, and there's been a lot of positive comments about it. So please let Sergeant Perez know that people appreciate it, and they hope that it comes back next year.
Okay.
So, all right. Okay, moving on. Fire Chief, Chief Sanders. Anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Sanders? All right. Jamie obviously isn't here. She did have some things that we were going to be discussing on new business. So we'll move on to City Attorney John.
The only thing I've got to report is, we did finally get our opinion back from the Attorney General regarding the adblocking property taxes owed by Land Bank Properties. And there aren't any, we arrived, so I think Marshall's going to take the baton and go from here.
I, I'm here with the county commissioner, so we're all on the same page. We did, we do have a property that's on the delinquent list for the property tax sale, which I've already spoke to the treasurer. After the Attorney General put that out for us, every county in the state of Kansas received that. So it's a cross-the-board type of deal as far as that goes. So I'll get the property taxes taken care of off the one, make sure the county's on the same page as we are. Hopefully, it goes smooth.
What's it like, three hundred bucks?
Three hundred and fifty-three dollars or something. It was on the, it's on the one property on West Second that was donated to us, so.
It's not like it's our decision?
No, not our decision, not, not the commissioner's. It's mandated by the state that they shall remove them, so. And they got all the information, I sent all that to the county clerk, chief ordered it to all the commissioners and everybody, so. Wish I'd be good to go there.
So if someone donates property and they're two years behind on their taxes, then it's.
It's a god money.
It's what?
It's an incentive.
I was going to say, it's a promotion, it's a way to promote people to be motivated.
I mean, otherwise, what happens, right, is you sell your property, and somebody over here is going to buy it, and they're not going to pay the damn taxes on it either. They're going to rent it out for three years, and that's going to go back to the tax sale, and they're going to owe the money to one of their properties.
I mean, I could understand, the county doesn't like that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, John?
No.
Okay, unless anybody's got any questions for John, move on.
Hey, real quick, did we need to take care of that under Jamie?
Actually, I put it under new business.
Okay.
Is there anything under old business that council would like to discuss?
Do we want to discuss the engine for the power plant? Did you guys get all that stuff today?
Yeah, got all of it. I mean, yeah, we discussed it.
I just didn't know.
We do have the bond, and Jamie did say that it's, the sooner that we move on this, the better. So.
I'll be honest, I didn't get my emails till about four-thirty today, so I, I tried to look over it, and I got the totals, and, and everything's actually fairly close. From the dollar amounts are fairly close, but I would sure love some time to sit down and.
I guess my only question that maybe we need to have for the next meeting is, they've got it set for a twenty-year Geo bond, it looked like, is that right? Yeah. Is that how far we want to drag that out, or do we want to do a ten-year? I mean, because in theory, I mean, the way we had it figured was we were roughly saving a hundred thousand a year by signing that new contract. And with their figures, at, at ten years, you save a half a percent on the interest. And I guess my, my thing is, is if we're going to do it, I would rather see it done in a ten-year process rather than a twenty.
What are the payments on twenty?
Fifty-one thousand a year.
Yeah, I'll just be honest, I mean, I don't know, spending this amount of money, it may not be a bad idea, you know, especially just for this.
Well, and I don't disagree with that, I was just thinking if they need to change something with the numbers, I don't know if it changes anything.
A half a percent on that dollar amount's incredible.
I was surprised that their rates were as high as they were.
I totally agree, I didn't say that.
Some ones in front. So, I mean, to me, those rates are, and I mean, and I don't remember what they were last year when they, when they was presented, that the rates wouldn't have changed much, and they should have. I mean, there should be some one, I mean, I think, so I think we should check on that.
Well, I just looked at the bottom line, and whereas it looks like we're going to borrow or use seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, in twenty years, it's going to cost us over a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Because you got quarter of a million in interest. So I mean, if it's something that we're going to do, I would much rather look at what the breakdown of a, of a ten-year payout is compared to the twenty.
Well, they, I mean, I assume that they change those rates, but if you take a percent off of those two, I mean, that makes a huge difference too.
And even a half a percent.
I don't know if they're right, but to me, they're too high, I mean, for a bond, I mean, I have bonds.
And I guess, John, do you know, does it change our mill levy when we do a bond?
No, I don't think so.
Because that was my other question, you know, they've got the, they've got the mill levy, AV plus MV, mill levy at six-point-eight-six, and AV, mill levy at eight-point-four-four.
I don't think so, I didn't print that stuff, I pretty much left it before I got those emails, but I don't think so. Was it an entire year ago that they were in here?
Oh, it was like this.
I think it was last spring.
This is dated, it says September two thousand and nineteen on this, so I just assume they use the same thing and change some of the numbers. I mean, I don't know if they changed it, but this, this says September two thousand and nineteen.
I think, I don't remember exactly when he come in and talked to us, but.
I don't think it was a year, I didn't know.
I think it was this year.
It hasn't been fifteen months ago.
It was this year, some.
October spring, yeah, I just wrote that.
I don't know where they get the September, I don't remember talking about this back in September.
Do we want to have Jamie do some research on some of this information and get better numbers, and have a special meeting?
No, yeah, definitely. And I'd, and I'd like Jeff to be a part of the meeting as well.
That's, that's extremely.
I mean, I would have them back, yeah. I would have them, I would have them up here.
Yeah, I would.
Because a lot of them, they kind of came unsolicited early.
Right.
Just, just when, when discussion started. There's no reason why they can't be here or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, but. Yeah, see, I don't know, this even says twenty-nineteen Geo bond, twenty-year single purpose. It's all dated back from twenty nineteen.
Yeah, and like, some of this is dated October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, City of St. John, two thousand and nineteen Geo bond. I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought maybe the interest percent would be a lot less than thirty.
Well, yeah, why don't we go ahead and see if we can get Jamie to do some research on this and bring better numbers or more updated numbers to us? We're looking, if we were supposedly supposed to do this before the end of the year, if we were looking at either the twenty-second, which is next Tuesday, or the twenty-ninth?
I'll just, I'm not rushing it, Mark.
Okay.
Next year's month.
Okay, all right.
I'm fine if we want to do it the first of the year too.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I didn't know how, how to take care of it or not, so.
Well, I think in one of the emails I read, where if we wanted to do something prior to the first meeting of the month, we needed to do it sooner. But I think funds wouldn't be available till mid or late February if we done it after January. So, yeah, I just, this is exciting rush. Yeah.
Okay. All right, is there any more discussion on the engine for a power plant? Okay, moving on to new business, we have year-end transfers. Everyone get a chance to take a look at those?
Do we just want to put that off of discussion on his, his business part of that?
We can.
Until next meeting, when she's here. Until next meeting, when she's here.
I suppose we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, we've done it before.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
This is something really near clerk here, she's just going to be here still.
We'll move that on to old business then. Okay. All right, next thing on new business is our Sierra Mountain Duck Bridge license. I have Sierra Mountain Bridge license for Cuello Nuevo Mexican restaurant. Anybody have any, wants to have any discussion on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, I have a second one here for Sierra Mountain Bridge dealer's license for El Paralito. Anybody have any comments or anything? Unless we do, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. And our last one here is for White's Food Lineup. Unless there's any discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries. All right. All right, next thing on the, um, new business is Christmas Eve holiday bonus. Let's see. Jamie had had it on here, um, let's see. Wanted to know if council wanted to let, uh, let everyone off for Christmas Eve and have a Christmas bonus this year. And we would need a motion if approved.
What would we typically do, a hundred-dollar bonus?
Hundred-dollar orders. I know that like the courthouse and the city of Stafford are all closed on Christmas Eve. They gave them Thursday and Friday off. So basically they get a four-day weekend. And I guess I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to be closed Christmas Eve. Give everybody the day off and pay every employee a hundred-dollar Christmas bonus.
Full-time?
Full-time. What, what did we do last year?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Just do the eve, let me talk about it. He has to be, probably has a separate.
Separate one?
Yeah. They're different.
So I'd make him, I'd change my motion for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day for the city to be closed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, now I'm looking at the Christmas bonus. So.
We done last year. I don't know. I don't know how many part-time we should have.
Two.
Two part-time. Let's do it across the board.
I guess so. I'd make a motion to give all employees, part-time included, a hundred-dollar Christmas bonus.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Next on under new business, we have ordinance number ten-seventy-eight dash twenty. This is an ordinance revending the membership of the Board of Trustees of the City Land Bank of St. John, Kansas.
Did you get the new one? Is that name right?
City of St. John, Kansas Land Bank.
Yeah. Mark, you made a detailed copy.
The only thing that changed is the City of St. John, Kansas Land Bank instead of how it come out the first time.
I did it late last night, I couldn't remember what it was called.
Which was, what did say the, whatever Mark created?
It's, it reads Trustees of the City Land Bank of St. John, Kansas.
Yeah. And that was just to reflect that the, that's how all the properties are listed.
Yeah, the entity has a name and I just couldn't remember how it was phrased. But it's City of St. John.
This is kind of what I asked John to do for the land bank and basically is it'll be two council members, the mayor, and then we'll appoint three people in January. That way it's not all council affiliated.
Get some public buy-in, right there, because it's growing.
John, is there a reason we couldn't do all public?
Do however you want. You can even do people outside of St. John if you want to.
Just kind of my thoughts.
I've, I've tried to get more.
Yeah.
I haven't had any luck. The, the.
Oh, you haven't tried.
Yeah, the three that I have for these positions, two of them were really willing to do it. The third one, not so much. But out of probably ten or fifteen people I've asked, those are the three that I've got committed to fill them positions. That's why I only done the three. It's because I couldn't really get anybody else to commit to it. Because I'm like you, I think the more outside of us would be better. Now, that might change in the future, but, you know, it's always something we could go in and re-change the ordinance.
You're suggesting you don't want to be appointed?
Well, I'm just, I'd like to keep it the same, like, keep zoning more, yeah, those are all appointed.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning more is a little different because to some extent, some of the work they do, you guys have to pull the review. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just, a lot of times it's hard to get membership on a lot of those things in a small town with a lot of overlap.
I'm all for separation and differentiation and getting the, the land bank's getting bigger and bigger and I don't want any conflict of interest with the city. I'm, I'm all for differentiating, that's.
I think this is at least a good start.
Yeah.
I'd hate to throw down there that we have six people that aren't affiliated and we can't fill them six spots.
Right. Well, we could always, we could always change, just have a later date.
Right.
You know, maybe we can get some other people within the community who are interested, hopefully. Start asking around at some point, so. But other than that, at that point, does council want to go ahead and, uh, you think you want to go ahead and approve this tonight?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's a step in the right direction and like you said, we could always, uh, we could always redo the whole thing later, later on. So, okay.
I guess you and the, you and the other council member appoint the three? Or I guess you've already got it, or?
Well, I've, I've got the people that we will appoint.
Okay.
Actually, I think it's.
I didn't know how that read in there or who, or how you appointed them, where their terms or.
I actually think Mark will appoint them, right?
It, it's the same way you do everything Mark does at you guys.
So at our January fifth meeting, Mark will appoint those three to those positions.
And he'll appoint council members annually. But then the other, the, the three appointed outside serve two-year terms. You've got one that starts with one year so that you have somebody you're appointing every single year. And then that way if you've got something goes off the council or you can switch which council members do it in a given year. And then within then, they appoint a, a president or somebody to preside over the land bank.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number ten-seventy-eight dash twenty. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. But the motion carries. Okay. We have the Stafford County Highway Department invoice in the amount of fifty-six-hundred dollars, zero cents. Is there any discussion on this?
I guess I didn't, this, this is for Franks to the Silver Ponds?
I'm assuming from Franks to the Silver Ponds.
It went from to the, to the, uh, I always asked if it was to the bridge of, what's his name, of the?
Fairchild?
Fairchild, yeah. That's what he told me when I asked him.
So did they approve this? Or did anybody say we had paid for this? Just curious.
Don't, I don't know. I know the county has always cleaned that ditch out in the past, but since I've been on, I don't, I can't say that we've ever paid for it or.
I just wonder if authorization was given from anybody at the city.
Yeah, I guess I thought we were hiring them to, from Franks back to the.
Bob's place.
The Bob's.
That's kind of what I had assumed.
I mean, I, I didn't know we. I, I never knew anything about.
I figured that was in St. John Township and they maintain St. John Township, so that would be their.
Unless there's some sort of agreement back in the day, but you would think they would ask us or ask somebody.
Right. I mean, is it our responsibility because all the city's water runs out there?
Right.
To the creek? That would be my only thing, but I don't, I don't know.
I guess when I drove down it, I, I didn't realize the point was cleaning the ditch. I thought the point was they were putting that dirt on the road to fix the road.
That's kind of what I thought, pulling it.
I, I guess, I don't know, double benefit. I, I didn't know anything about it. I guess I thought that was.
You gotta know.
Wish things I felt about that then?
I don't know.
I, I mean, if nobody knows about it, I mean, I guess we just need, I mean, it's just need an airport that, you know.
Yeah, I, I didn't know anything about the township.
You know, pays for anything of that or, I don't know.
This is something that I looked back on some of my notes and I just didn't, couldn't find anything. But that doesn't mean that it wasn't talked about and approved or anything, but I just, I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, there, there was.
I know we had talked about them, having them clean out from Ninth Street to Franks Port.
Yeah, we're going to try and do that after the first year.
We had just discussed it. We did, we had it, I think Jeff or Jason, somebody brought it up at one, one time.
No, it was Jamie. Jamie brought it up and then we just talked about it and I thought it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, but this was, this work here was already done.
That, that's right.
Or was being done, that's what promoted that.
Yeah, because that's the trip.
Right, they, they were already out there cleaning it.
Working on this project, this fifty-six-hundred.
And we had brought up the whole thing about seeing what they would charge us to go ahead and clean it back to the south because we don't have any way of getting that part down there.
So if that's how you weren't expecting this bill?
Absolutely right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It'd be down the street, the dirt down there, but it pays for it, I don't know.
Do you want to get Jamie on the phone and ask? Or do we want to wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, let's just wait till next meeting.
Okay, so we'll table it? Is everyone okay with that?
That'll get some time to do some research in the meantime and make a few calls.
Everyone's okay with tableing it?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Move to old business?
Yeah. Okay, all right here. Okay, right now we've got a ten-minute executive session for non-elected personnel employee evaluation to include a police chief, council, and city attorney. And I get a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, we'll resume at seven-fifty-six. All this meeting back to order, having no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.